Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome everyone to the 2nd or 3rd. I had to look at my watch because everything I did today, I put down as April the 4th. I don't know where I did it.
Take tomorrow off.
I forget it. But the first item of business is the Plagiarum. I'm H.R. Lee Vitale to lead it, but I want to tell you all something. Lee has been doing her senior project with us and has gotten a full ride scholarship to the University of North Carolina Greensboro. You will lead us, Luke Leo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business is the adoption of the April the 3rd Town Board Agenda. Does anyone have any additions or want to change anything on the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this agenda. All in favor? The next is the approval of the March 6, 2017 Town Board Minutes. Anybody have any corrections or additions to it? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve this agenda. Second? All in favor? Alright, the next item of business is Public Hearing at 7:05. We've got about two, maybe three minutes before we start. I have no one signed up for the public comment on the public session. Does anybody want to make any, sign up for the public session? The public session is different than the public hearings. So, anybody else out in the, in the audience that hasn't signed up that might want to speak at the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, think it's close enough?
I think it's close enough too.
Can any trackers come in and let them?
John wants to watch the game.
I do.
If there's anything in my power to keep this board open until 11 o'clock tonight, I will do all I can, all the things I can, or to me. It's, yes. Alright, the next item is the Public Hearing Regarding the Charter of the Town of Franklin to Change the Style of Municipal Corporation from Board of Aldermen to Town Council. I hereby declare this public hearing open, and we have five people signed up to speak, and the first is Lee Vitale. Yes, we can hear you?
Mayor, Town Board, thank you for letting me speak tonight about the importance of changing the title of Alderman to Councilmember. The term Alderman derives from Old English and is translated as old men. I believe it is of paramount importance to get younger generations involved in local government, but when we use archaic terms such as Alderman, it is unappealing to young women who may have aspirations of someday being on the Town Board. I feel as though it is important to change this title into Councilmember because it will gain universal appeal and it will be easier to translate when educating children on the different functions of local government and the Town Board. Our nation has rapidly progressed since the time we adopted the title of Alderman. Women can vote, women can choose to be informed about politics in our nation, and women can even run for office if they so choose. I feel as though if we want to be up to date in the 21st century and we want to encourage young women to live professional lives and to be involved in local politics, it is of great importance that we adopt simple measures like this. Councilmember is a more inclusive title and Franklin is an inclusive town. That is why I believe this change is fitting. Thank you for hearing my concerns and I hope this change is made. Thank you.
The next is Lori Beagle. Lori, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Town, uh, Town of Alderman. I have worked for the Town of Franklin for 24 years, and I started at Franklin Police Department as a secretary. After two years, I went to BLAT and became a sworn officer. I brought my first badge with me tonight. It says Police Woman. And at the time, I just accepted that because I was a rookie and I thought, I'll just go along and be part of the gang, but it says Police Woman. It also had a number. The thing that happened with these numbers is every time that we would get promoted, we would have to change the badge, or when someone left, you moved up, you got a new badge. So my next badge would have a number, but instead of spending $100 that it costs to get each new badge to say Police Woman, I went to Police Mail. But then somewhere along in years, we changed and had a policy and procedure. And when that policy and procedure was written by the town, it became Police Officer. And all gender roles were eliminated and there's never been a question. It's real easy though to roll from Policeman into Police Officer because you're not changing something that's already been written up to everyone. But then I went to Police Officer, and they removed the number, so that way we didn't have to keep changing badges. But the, one of the concerns I saw was that it may cost so much, but now almost everything we do is digital. It would just require changing it digitally in our general statute, and then when, if someone needs it, they can print it off. But there wouldn't be an angry one to buy a badge, but there would be need for change here. But like she said, it would be welcoming to everyone just to see Councilmember. And after 24 years, I now have a new badge or had one for 10 years that just says Sergeant. Because the town has changed before and there was no issue with it. Thank you.
Nancy Scott. In case y'all, as a disclaimer, this is my life.
Thank you all for letting me come. Very good in these places, and I want to thank you for the service you're doing in that town. Yes, I would speak in favor of the change. I served on a board Alderman for 11 years with four different leaders. I was thinking about that today. Dr. Henson and Steel Smith, Tom Woodley and Mr. Collins. And the idea of Alderman never was an issue, but it was just an awkward kind of thing. People would say Alderwoman, which isn't a word, and Alderman, which didn't get. And so I just think it's just a common sense change, and it's time to do it. I like to addition, but this is obsolete, so I would recommend change. I wanted to speak about two other things, but I don't get to do yet, ma'am.
You missed the public comment.
Okay, that's fine, I'll come back.
Joyce Hanlon.
Hi, I'm Joyce Hanlon. For those who don't know me, I was eight years as an Alderman. I ran for an Alderman. I knew that was going to be my title. Never bothered me one way or the other. I knew my sex. Yes, it was awkward sometimes, you had to explain it, but once you did explain it to people, they kind of just shrugged their shoulders and said, "Go with it." To me, it's history. A lot of people have held that office, women, and we all held it to do our jobs. We did it to better our town. We didn't care what we were called, well, within reason, what we were called. But I think it's, a change is always good, but do we have to? I think a lot of young women who are coming up aren't so to be caring, whether they're called an Alderman, or an Alderwoman, or a Council. They're wanting to do the job. They're out there to do the job and get it done. Thank you.
Ms. Cupper, Suzanne Cupper. Welcome.
I come here on behalf of a group of progressive women seeking favor of this change to Town Council. I actually spent my morning doing a little bit of research, and I won't bore you with all of it, but there is research to back up the fact that language is powerful. It not only serves as a reflection of history and society, but it continues to shape those perceptions. And if we continue to use language that is not inclusive, it continues to, excuse me, to render women and those who don't conform to Latin gender as invisible. So we support this change.
That's all that I have signed up. Did I miss anything? If not, Council, oh, that's alright.
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Yes, please.
I might, I might. I would like to just know that the taxpayers would need to know, and I understand what you're saying about being digitally, but it is going to prove a, be it a burden on our budget, there are going to be fees for changing this. And do our taxpayers want to have to be paying this at this time?
I can answer that in a few minutes for you. I can answer that.
Are you the only taxpayer here in the room?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
But if you'd like to ask the question of the taxpayers, feel free to do so.
Okay, so none of them are here?
Alright, there being no further comments, I'll close this public hearing at 11 minutes after 7:00.
And Mr. Mayor, procedural note, I'm just sitting here reviewing the statute that permits amendment by ordinance, and what it says is following the public hearing, but not earlier than the next regular meeting with the council, and not later than 60 days from the day of the hearing, you can consider an adoptment. So you're actually not permitted to take action on this subject tonight. You would have to, it says not later than the next regular meeting.
Well, we're voting right?
No, sir. I'm sorry, but the direction of the statute is not earlier than the next regular meeting. So the idea being, you announced the intention to make this change in the charter, you had properly noticed that and had a hearing on it now, but the next direction is not earlier than the next regular meeting. And I apologize, I should have said that.
Yeah, I think we should have let us know sooner. We were prepared for a vote tonight, Council.
Well, I understand if, you know, I understand.
It's on the agenda, so I guess we need to modify the agenda.
I think it just got modified.
Well, my apologies, but if you, I just, before you have the, we can have a discussion tonight if you want to, but you wouldn't be permitted to take action on it in one way, call the discussion, just before action.
I should have known this, I guess we should have known this. Okay, let's move on. Alright, so under the new business, we can have some discussion of this, but apparently we cannot take a vote on it tonight. Does anyone want to weigh in one way or the other on this?
I would like to know the cost of this.
I think I can answer that. We did a little research, and basically, as we pass new ordinances and we do new changes in the ordinance book, the cost to have a frontist page made that can be copied locally in front of all our ordinance, ordinance books, it's basically going to cost $18.50. And what that does is that allows us to have a front page telling everyone that where the term Alderman is used, it is now Councilmember. Is that not what we can do?
I think that would be sufficient for, you know, at least the first run at what the ordinance book says. And I think it's legally sufficient to say this term is understood throughout, to do this. Yes, sir.
Now, I do think that as, as people rotate in and off the board, the business cards do have all of them on right now, but as you run out of those, they'll be replaced. There is no stationery or anything like that within the town that says anything other than Town of Franklin in our address. The, I can, Madam Mayor, can you think of anything that would? Would you tell us what you, the numbers that you have researched?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Kind of to echo Mayor Scott, it does appear that in the ordinance book that we currently have, in speaking with American Legal Publishing, it will cost you around $18 to $18.50 per page. And it is per page whether the term is used once or 20 times. However, I did look to see kind of how many pages we would be looking at in your current ordinance book. Your ordinance book is currently 276 pages, I believe. So if you were to do the full change at once, now, this is just ballpark, just for your ordinance book, and there may be pages that don't have that in there, but the worst-case scenario you'd be looking at is around $4,968.
$5,000. But that is not what I am going to leave. Because my understanding was that all we need to do, and Council, I think you mentioned this, was that we can make the change with one page on the very beginning of all our ordinance books, which they would charge $18.50 to, and then we could reproduce it locally.
You can't do that, but if you go into a-
But if we do what?
If you do the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole book.
You do the whole 276 pages.
But at some time, isn't the whole book going to have to be done? I mean, this is just a band-aid, isn't it?
And that does happen on a regular basis anyway, which is, it's one of the reasons we've been trying to work toward moving away from a printed, you know, ideally, we're eventually going to have a situation where there is one printed ordinance book and it's in the Town Park's office, and otherwise, you can go online and find all of it. So we've been trying to move in that direction or continuing to do so. There may be occasions that comes up sooner rather than later to look at, you know, some global changes like, like. But I don't know that that, just this change, caused you to incur that cost. And I do think it's legally sufficient to-
Madam Cupper, could you tell me how much it would cost to change this?
Those are around $100 each. But now you can, you can rotate it in, or you can phase it in one at a time if you wanted.
Isn't this something though that's going to be under the direct purview of the, of the town manager, isn't that, isn't this part of her? If we vote to change it, isn't any of that to her to do?
To cover the cost, any associated costs?
Yeah, I'm losing, I'm thinking about the ballgame and I'm losing my train of thought. But if you, if you do something, she's the one that has to implement. So it's going to be up to her to figure out which way she wants to do it. It's not really going to be up to us at this point, is it? I think the vote to do it is up to us. Oh, but it is, it is the vote. But after the vote, then she's got to implement whatever change we tell her. And so I'm thinking that any cost associated with our vote is going to be up to her and not up to the Town Council.
You take that in, gentlemen.
I mean, and I don't know that we have a pinned-down number exactly of what it would cost. I think we'll have to-
Well, there, there is a pinned-down number because it depends on which way the Town Board wants to go. If you want to follow Mayor Scott's suggestion, you can phase it in over time. However, if you're wanting a total ballpark cost of if we were to take this tomorrow, if you legally could, and change the entire book, then you would be looking at the full But there's two approaches that you could take to this.
And, and is there not additional cost other than just the vote?
You may have legal council fees, if you did go to change your nameplates, you could, you could look at a cost, I mean, you could go as high as $8,000, but it's dependent on how the Board wants to do it. You can phase it in over time, or you can bite the bullet and do it all at once.
Alright, so I guess there's no point in proceeding any further tonight? I would like to get a consensus of the Board, how the Board feels, and open it for discussion.
Can we just discuss it?
Well, I have to finish mine. Ms. McCray?
I just wanted to say one thing, speaking of tradition. It's my understanding from reading all the documents that the first members of the Board who's had Franklin were called Commissioners, Town Commissioners. And so at some point, that was changed to Alderman. So it's not like we're just always have been following the change. And I think personally, Commissioner is confusing because we have two commissioners, but that was the case at one time.
Well, you know, we've done, we've done a lot of things to change. One of them's right back here. We've gotten rid of that old seal that cost us an army lady, and we put this up there. And now people know what Franklin's about. They didn't know when we were using the state seal, and we changed that. We no longer refer to Fireman, or Policeman, all that. We've talked about that. This town's changing. We're a high-tech center. We're a regional medical center, a tourist destination, new residents are coming in, a center for environmental groups, arts, and outdoor activities. It's time to move into that period. And one of the ways that we do it, I did a little check, and in 27, in the past 27 years, there have been two women on every one of these boards that we're sitting around tonight. Two women. Women are going into every kind of public service, they're becoming CEOs of organizations, they're going into our public service, they're becoming managers, every way you look at it. This allows us to be gender neutral. And I, for one, cannot see whether there's any harm in doing that. I think the cost has been a little bit overstated because this is one of those things that we can do over time, as we did our stationery, putting our logo on which everybody really loves and they identify with Franklin. I don't know, I, I've been, I thought that we were going to have a vote tonight on Franklin. But I will say this, change is inevitable, whether we like it or not, it's come to Franklin. Just look where we are today compared to where we were 15, 20, 30 years ago. And, and we're basically, as far as western North Carolina is concerned, we're pretty much the go-to town.
Can I say one more?
You start, then I, please.
I want to thank all the people who spoke tonight and last, the last meeting, we had a lady who spoke. I think you all made some wonderful points. Lee, you did a great job. And, but I think that, it looks to me like, especially when women are excited about this happening, is we've had so many coming out to talk. And I, I think it obviously means a lot to the young women, and once you call somebody, it really does matter.
It matters.
Alright, unless there's some other comment, well, there's one.
I'll comment, actually.
Yes, please.
Since we're talking about it being general neutral and about it making women want to do the job, I kind of go with Joyce on this. I knew what the name was when I got into this. I don't get into political correctness. I knew it was Alderman. So as far as I'm concerned, I could care less what I'm called, it's the job that I do. And I look at it as what, are we making it, you know, pretty for people to want to be There's, there's two sides of the way you look at, at a name. I don't care if we change it one way or the other, if it doesn't cost us money, I'm fine. But I also don't like to send the message that the job that you do is in the name that it holds. But that's just my two cents worth on it.
May I go to weigh in?
Sure, pending the cost, I would be in favor of the change. If it were $5,000, I would probably change my mind. If it's $18.50, I would be in favor of the change. My thought is, like Patty, I couldn't really care less what I'm called, as long as I'm able to do the job to the best of my ability. But if it makes people feel that we are more approachable and more inclusive, and, I don't know, more available, then I don't see a reason not to change it. I have, you know, I have no attachment to the term necessarily. You know, especially when I, anyone asks me about it, and they say, well, people usually say, "You're a Commissioner now, right?" I say, "No, Alderman." And then the next question, of course, is what is an Alderman? And then when I say, "It's like Town Council," then it's clear, "Okay, I get it." So there's that aspect of it as well, people don't always even know what it is. But for me personally, it doesn't, it never weighed that heavy, but I see that it is important to people in this town and people that I care about. And, I don't know, I would be in favor of changing it if it makes the Town Board more inviting to, to those individuals.
Any others want to weigh in?
The only thing I would say is, it seems like, is there any possible town management and council get a little more details on kind of the specifics of what it worth if we did phase that in, if we did that $18.50 first base, like maybe give the public, because obviously they're concerned, some area, some idea at the next meeting, or whenever we decide to hold that, the, the notice.
Let me say, there were state statutes, and we were under those state statutes.
But yeah, just a couple of ideas, we know how much we have to spend upfront year two, year three.
We'd be glad to, because-
Because I understand, as, I think you were trying to say, John, that, you know, there's, we're going to change some of it anyway for other reasons as we go forward, so you can do that at the same time. It's not necessarily an inherent cost of this, but so much as it is maybe just regular talent.
No, we'll certainly be glad to, because it, it depends on which way you go. You want worst-case scenario, we gave it to you, you can do another approach, so it's-
Mr. Thomas, you want to say your name? Okay. I'm trying to figure it out, and I don't really have a huge science, so I generally say where I'm at. Alright, looks like that's pretty much the issue right now. Thank you, Ollie Oliver King, it's her, appreciate it. Okay, Dean DeFord, the River District Overlaying to Town Planning Board. Mr. Setser, you're up, sir. A few maps sort of run in.
Good evening, Board, good afternoon, Mayor. So, what I'm here tonight is, of course, is to pour this idea of the River District down to the Town Planning Board for their discussion and review. Before the, before I, we get it, I've got a few comments, since this is a new idea that we haven't tackled before in our zoning, I'd like to take some few comments about it. So I'm here tonight to present an idea for the creation of a River Overlay District along the Little Tennessee River and Colle Sage River. In a minute, I will read the purpose of this district, to lay out the goals that is intended to achieve by the creation of an overlay district. So first, this idea came about six months ago when I was working and thinking about ideas to create more recreation and economic benefits along the river valley. As many people know, there is a lot of momentum building along the district with the new bridge as being built that will connect the Greenway easier to the two sections on the opposite side of the river. The brownfield work that is being done at Main Springs Office, which will create green space and local art along the river. Businesses alike, Trinity Brewing Company, that was the first business to incorporate the river into their business plan. Also, the native and cultural benefits that are yet to be harnessed, and that could be huge benefit for economic growth of the district and for Franklin. Having a river the size of the Little Tennessee running through the center of town is a valuable asset that many towns would love to have. The goal of this district is to create more growth by walkability, beautification, create healthy water quality, and identifiable real sense of place. I'd like to note that the creation of the district wouldn't change any uses of the underlying zones or setbacks unless there are some of the new uses that would pose danger to the river or have little economic benefit to the district. So now I'll read the proposed intro, purpose of the district as currently written. So if this, when we went through the whole process, would be section 152, 042, which is currently reserved in our Town of Franklin UDO. So the purpose of the River District Overlay is to create a district that will promote, celebrate, conserve, promote, and manage the areas along the Little Tennessee River and Colle Sage River within the corporate limits and the areas of the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the Town of Franklin, North Carolina. Is the intent of these standards to promote economic re-bizization, business, and cultural heritage to the river valley, all while providing opportunities for recreation and enjoyment for residents and visitors. So, as you know, I just handed out a map. This map is, you see some areas shaded in blue, that's kind of- of the overlay. And you can see our underlying districts underneath it. Ideas were sent us through the planning board, and they'd look at those parcels, those areas that are in shaded, and they can discuss it, tweak it. Doesn't say these are the exact parcels that would ultimately be in it. They could say, take some out. They could say, you want more? Or, you know, we could change it. Nothing's set in stone. But that's kind of the area I'm looking at. The areas along Highland Road, Depot Street, out Lakeside Drive, Depot Extension, those areas along the river and the Greenway. Some of the goals, and when I was talking about the real sense of place, is creating a district that can identify, people, when you get there, they know they're there, and that there are all the businesses and people that are associated with the area that can kind of rally behind and get behind and be proud of. Something that would be comparable, everybody knows about, you've got downtown, and you take a Main Street, Back Street, it's kind of a downtown district that it's, you know, you know that's downtown. And since you would be creating the same thing in these areas, that all these businesses and areas can get behind. With signage, banners, they could even come up with their own symbol that would identify for the district. That people see it, they know how to get there. Harness all these valuable assets that we have and put it all in one, under one hat. Of course, there's also in your packet, you should have a draft language for the overlay district, which there's some stuff in there on street trees, planting sidewalks, even stuff on purview services, stormwater drainage, want to create better water quality in the river. So, my goal is to, for a schedule for this, which also is wished to tonight, is to have it forward down to the planning board April for the discussion. Then at the April meeting, planning board will discuss it, and then I'm going to urge them to set a hearing at the planning board for, and send out letters, and then probably take a half-page ad out in the press for anybody who wants to come to the hearing and see thoughts, concerns, anything, so we can go through the whole process and hear, hear the whole process at the planning board. And then that would be in June. And then July, planning board would take those comments, look at it, make changes, make recommendations from there, and then look for August to come back to the board for the set of official hearing with the town board and then for the potential vote that can. That could be tweaked. It could, we could take longer in that, but that's a longer process than we're normally used to doing. We've got a couple of extra months in there. Should we give them any comments? I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to rush this through and not think about everything through, so.
Done a lot of work on this. It looks really good. It's a thing moving the town forward. Thank you, sir. All right. Any comments from the board? Any questions of Mr. Setser?
I'm just curious about who, sorry.
No, please, go right here.
This one section here at the A. Lyle Street, is that all DOT possibly, like this big truck there that's, sort of gray.
Oh, gray, yeah. Anything yellow and gray on our zoning map is just a street, it's rather right away. And some of the parcels are kind of big. I just took in whole parcels, and some of them would be cut in half. It was just putting everything in there that touched the river.
I'd like, I'd like me and you, I'll still, because I think for many, many weeks on Franklin, we're Tennessee right now is probably the greatest resource we've got from the grid. I'm amazed at the number of people that are voting on the Little Tennessee. Business is everything. Any further discussion? Adam?
I definitely agree with your comments.
Thank you for what you're doing. Okay. We have a street closing, did you have anything else, sir?
I don't think there's a vote.
Okay. We call for a motion to forward to the River District Overlay to the Town Planning Board. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? All right, all in favor? Street closing request, Bahamas brings back to church. Madam Manager, do you have this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. What you have before you tonight is a street closing request to close Aula Street on Sunday, April the 16th, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.
Okay. All right. Anybody, any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion to close Aula Street, Sunday, April the 16th, 2017, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Tell motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. All in favor. The next item, the close street sidewalk construction agreement between the Town of Franklin and DOT. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. If the board will recall, back in November of 2016, we sent a letter of support in order to possibly do a 20% match to construct new sidewalks along Depot Street. And DOT has sent us a construction agreement, and the town's cost would be $55,200. You would be able to take that out of your Powellville funds.
All right. Any discussion from the board?
The town's cost would be how much?
$55,200.
Who are we sitting on Powellville money?
We look, you've got $450,000 in reserve, and we, annual budget, you have $125,000, and we've spent maybe $60,000 of that. You're well-suited, if the board would like.
I think that's probably one of the most important streets in town, and the main sidewalk, so much of this.
Twenty cents on the dollar?
Absolutely.
Twenty cents on the dollar?
Yes, sir.
I made that note.
We don't have, do we have the motion yet? Mr. Hennig, are you providing a motion on that as planned?
I understood the motion to be to move the expenditure of the funds and to agree to the DOT match.
All right. Somebody want to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'll say.
All in favor. All right. Madam Manager, you have a discussion on speeding enforcement on Bidwell Street?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. You have a handout before each of you tonight. And our police department conducted a three-month study on Bidwell Street based on the concerns of speeding. And according to our police chief, and logging some hours to kind of give a breakdown to the board, we have logged 87 hours. We've written 16 citations, along with 19 where the tickets were issued. A couple suggestions from our police chief and our police department is maybe allow us to put two additional speed limit signs up on that way because they're not very visible. As far as speeding, our police department feels as though that they have spoken with residents on Bidwell, and with their enforcement measures, they feel like speeding is hopefully under control on this street. The police chief and the police department did want to make one other suggestion for the board to consider is, once you're starting to, if you turn up Bidwell Street and you're headed north towards 28, when you stop there at the sunset, something for the board to consider is to put up a right turn only area. One thing, though, to think about the consequences could be, will that flood that traffic that's trying to only turn right now? Will that flood them to go to Wild Street or Green Street?
Okay. Any discussion from board? Okay, this is for information only, so go vote on this.
Well, I mean, is it going to come to a vote?
I don't know. Discussion from the board.
I say put a couple more speed limit signs. I don't want to stop them from turning left or they will run up the road. That's just awkward on myself. But they need a couple more speed limit signs. I'm sure we've got some of those.
Yes, sir, we do.
So, would you be, all right, we're just going to get with the signs, Mr. Collins, and then we'll.
I would. I would.
I think we'd take, we'd need to take a vote on that, let's get a turn, wouldn't we?
I don't think, Mr. Mayor, I don't think you need one. I think that that would be.
I can handle that announcement.
Okay. I've got a, Mr. Oster, do you have a budget amendment?
Yes, in your packet, you have a budget amendment to appropriate additional remedies that we've received from the fabric of the scene. This is where a couple of our officers actually directed back to the town bridge and to appropriate this into the place that we have the town on. $560.
Motion. Mr. Brew is presenting. All in favor. All right. Mr. Hennig, do you have a cross-connection control ordinance?
I do. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to disappoint everybody. I know you were excited to talk about cross-connect, connection control, but I actually need a little bit more time to this ordinance. So I would ask you to just table it until we're ready.
We need a motion to table. Seconds to table. All in favor. All right. Mr. Hennig, do you have the traffic ordinance suggesting the speed on the Moser Drive?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The, you may recall last month, we looked at the ordinance, how you actually passed the ordinance that fixed your traffic schedules to conform to the speed limits that you have set on lots of streets that have not been added to the schedule a long time. One we were not clear on in what to do with had a sign, you don't actually have a speed limit set in the ordinance for the Moser Drive, had somehow a 15 mile an hour speed limit on it. I have proposed here, and I have an ordinance for you, that we'll change it to 20 miles an hour. It is entirely left to the board, whether you want more study on that. And I don't know whether Mr. Setser or Chief Adams have looked at that issue since then. The other one is, and you may need some discussion on this, the one-way street setting on with Hawes Street. You have another schedule on the track schedules that sets one-way streets. Hawes Street is currently listed as a one-way street. I've been here and represented both you and the school district, and it's got a lot to do with whether it changed to one way or the other. And to be honest, I don't remember how it got turned which way and which way it's supposed to be now. I think we have it listed as a one-way street. I think it's being traveled as two-way, but it depends on who you ask. So it's kind of up to you whether it should be set as a, as a one-way street, or can remove the two ways to traffic. And I don't know whether Chief Adams may have some opinion on, on the safety.
Historically, it was two, and it got turned to one for traffic. At least up to the point going east until you got to the school. It stayed two-way going out towards river then. I mean, it has the schools, what is it now?
Laurie probably answered that.
It's both ways. And one of the reasons at one point it's set to one way is because the buses do line up there in the afternoon and in the morn, well, not in the mornings, they drop off in the morning. But the afternoon, they line along that way. It was to keep people from passing around the buses and going against the traffic. And that was, but now they do move both ways. It's about a 20-minute period that the buses are there. So that's why it went back to being two-way, because that problem was kind of resolved when they drew so much attention.
So right now, is it two-way?
It's two ways all the time.
And is everybody okay, as far as, as far as you know?
Because now there's an officer there who's visible, and if there's any problems there, you know, like if there's a problem driver passing the buses as their stop, they draw the school police officer's attention.
Well, two-way would be the default position, wouldn't it, unless there was some reason to go one-way?
There is a schedule with five streets that are set in that schedule as one-way. And so, yes, the default's two-way. And so what this does is just delete the Hawes Street from that list of one-way streets.
I certainly would want to hear from the principal or somebody, though, just before we did it. We don't have to do it until tonight necessarily, but I'd hate to think that we just didn't include them and have to come back and revisit it.
I'd be happy to take it up. I'd be happy to call it. So, and I don't know whether, so you all want to preserve judgment on the Moser Drive as well, and just taking a vote at once?
No, I mean, we don't make any Mosers.
The Moser 10, right.
Yeah.
In that case, Mr. Mayor, proper motion would be to adopt the ordinance with the deletion of current section two concerning the Hawes Street and approving a 20 mile an hour speed limit on the Moser Drive.
Second. All in favor. All right. Anybody have any announcements? Anything you want to bring forward? The only thing I have is, we had a lot of complaints, which was not the town's fault, but I'd like the media to make note that there was a sign, a big flashing sign that said the town bridge was closed, and that has been taken care of there. And the sign just says trucks use often around. That's, that's been taken care of.
I don't like the sign going home, going east on these things that says road closed there.
That's what we closed.
Well, I mean, but I saw today two signs, permanent signs saying road closed. It should say detour. Close makes you think, you can go somewhere and hit a wall or whatever. But it's a detour. And it says, I was there today, on both sides, road closed 500 feet ahead or something like that.
The signage is confusing.
In front of the hotspot.
Well, we, we actually have found a sweet spot.
But we will, it's, it's, we got plenty of time to find it.
Actually.
Mr. X, like doing men's comedy. Yeah. Why don't they work on Saturdays and Sundays, whenever there's no traffic there? On projects like this, fly the flies at night seven days a week.
I'll appoint you to go to A.
Off the side of the bridge.
I don't think I'd be the one to go anywhere. The, we did have a very successful Vietnam Veterans Day and sidewalk yard sale. It worked out very well, and I want to commend the town employees, although it was not a town event, the town employees did so much to make it a success. All right. Town Hall offices will be closed Friday, April the 14th, and Thursday, Friday. And the town's work session, get your calendars out, will be Monday, April the 17th, 5:30 p.m. in the town hall here. There'll be no further business. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All right. Everybody in favor? We'll watch the ballgame.